Hi, I'm Jill Vergara and I'm one of the co-sponsors of the noise revisions to Fairfield's current noise ordinance. We put this presentation together to try to better explain some of the proposed changes, and we hope that this serves the community. So again, this is a presentation about the proposed revisions to Fairfield's noise ordinance. We undertook these revisions in response to constituent complaints. It's important to note that these complaints came from across various neighborhoods and RTM districts and followed no political affiliation. Fairfield is uniquely predisposed to noise issues. We have several areas of dense residential housing, high-traffic town amenities, two large and thriving universities, and a huge increase in working from home after COVID. We've put a lot of work into these revisions and have discussed many times in quite a few public meetings before the RTM's Legislation and Administration Committee, as well as the full RTM. You can see from this list that we've reviewed several sources, including our current ordinance, other Connecticut towns' local ordinances, as well as the state regulations. And we've consulted with previous colleagues of ours about work that was put into these revisions in the past, as well as residents' work on this issue. We've really tried to do a thorough review of the noise ordinance. What we've found is that Fairfield's ordinance is an outlier in the state. Fairfield is the only town in Connecticut with no daytime noise restrictions. Our town ordinance is less protective than required by state law, and this needs to be fixed. Enforcement of the current ordinance is hampered by equipment requirements. So it's important to understand that the state has a regulatory framework for noise violations that are supposed to serve as a baseline for protections against excessive noise. Connecticut has state noise regulations that apply to all towns by default. Towns can implement their own local ordinances, but these ordinances must be at least as stringent as the state regulations. 66 towns have adopted their own, including Fairfield. Connecticut's state noise regulations include restrictions on noise emissions in both daytime and nighttime hours. They also include specific decibel limits by noise zones that towns with their own local ordinances must match. Fairfield has its own local noise ordinance. It's in our town code under Chapter 78. It was enacted in 1985 and amended unanimously and ratified as recently as 2017. It prohibits excessive noise only during nighttime hours, and it requires officers to use a decibel meter to determine whether a violation has occurred. In effect, Fairfield is the only town in Connecticut with a local noise ordinance that does not protect people from excessive noise during the day. All other towns include daytime coverage in their town-specific ordinance or are covered by the state regulations, which includes daytime noise restrictions. Currently, when a complaint is made, police must go to that complainant's property, who is called a receptor under our local ordinance, and take a decibel reading. If the decibel reading exceeds the levels outlined in Section 78.5, the police officer must issue a warning. If the police have to return to the same property and the noise exceeds the specified decibel levels again, the officer must issue an infraction notice with a fine. Enforcing decibel limits requires the use of decibel meters, which the Fairfield Police Department does not typically carry. We've identified problems with Fairfield's current ordinance. Our current ordinance fails to protect people from excessive noise during the daytime hours in violation of state statutory requirements, so daytime hours must be added. Our current ordinance also calls for the use of decibel meters to determine whether a noise violation has occurred. However, our police officers do not currently carry decibel meters, and we've been told that they do not wish to carry decibel meters in the future, citing training and maneuverability concerns, as well as modern policing demands and standards in the 21st century. Instead of applying the local noise ordinance to noise complaints, the police department uses criminal laws in Connecticut's Penal Code to respond to noise complaints. These include creating a public disturbance, which is a criminal infraction, disorderly conduct, which is a Class C misdemeanor, breach of peace, which is a Class D felony or a Class B misdemeanor. These are pretty onerous tools with higher standards than a local ordinance meant for higher-level violations. There are no defining thresholds dictating what a noise violation is under these statutes, so the decision to enforce is very subjective. These criminal statutes also require intent to cause inconvenience, annoyance, or alarm, or recklessly creating a risk. Because these bear criminal liability, there is also a higher bar to finding violations. Consequently, out of the hundreds of noise complaints per year, only a handful of infractions are issued. The result is that residents complain of frustration with inconsistent enforcement, unpredictability, and times when excessive noise have gone unabated. The other thing to note is that these criminal statutes, like public disturbance and disorderly conduct, are fines collected and remitted to the state. But when fines are collected under Fairfield's local ordinance, they are paid to the town. Our revisions would be an update for our current ordinance. We need to make this update. It's required in order to bring Fairfield's noise ordinance into compliance with state law. The proposed updates would be consistent with typical restrictions in place in other Connecticut towns. First, adding daytime hours brings Fairfield into compliance with state law by covering both daytime and nighttime hours. This is required. Second, the audibility option overcomes decibel meter requirements by giving the police the option to use a plainly audible standard for noise complaints involving amplified music. This is not a novel or new concept. Many towns across Connecticut use the plainly audible standard, including Norwalk and Torrington. Third, the revisions exempt many activities from regulation. It includes customary protections to allow residents' flexibility to maintain their properties, as well as exemptions for garbage collection and various other essential activities. It provides for variance procedure for special circumstances and events as well. As you can see from this discussion, the inclusion of daytime hours is necessary to be compliant with state law. We've defined daytime hours to be 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, and 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Saturday through Sunday. Weekend nighttime hours were updated to start at 10:00 p.m. instead of 11:00 p.m. This aligns our local ordinance with the state regulations. Weekday daytime hour decibel limits align with the state baseline requirements as well. To give the police more flexibility, the revision includes the option for an audibility standard for certain cases. Instead of taking a decibel meter reading, a responding officer can issue a noise ordinance violation if they determine that noise coming from a sound production device is plainly audible from a fixed distance. This is a common provision in other town ordinances, including Norwalk, Hartford, Bloomfield, Torrington, among others. The audibility standard is strictly limited. It can only be used in response to noise emitted from a sound production device. A sound production device is defined as "any device whose primary function is the production of sound and is electronically amplified," including, but not limited to, any loudspeaker, radio, vehicle stereo, vehicle muffler, television, digital or analog music player, public address system, or sound amplifying equipment. The revision specifically clarifies that unamplified human voices are excluded, as well as musical instruments not attached to amps or speakers. We included a long list of exceptions in this ordinance, including natural phenomena, school church bells, emergency sirens, OSHA devices, agricultural activities, human voices, school construction, emergencies, snow plowing, road maintenance, waste collection, utility repairs, public celebrations, permitted fireworks, public demonstrations, construction demolition, and home maintenance between 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. weekdays, and 9:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. weekends, licensed blasting from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. weekdays, and landscaping and yard maintenance from 7:00 a.m. to 8:30 p.m. weekdays, and 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. weekends. I need to explain this part of the exceptions because I think that there was a lot of community misunderstanding about how this functions. We are going to move these exceptions from the specific prohibitions because the way it was written, I think, was confusing. What was meant to happen was that these activities were supposed to be exempted completely from regulation at certain times of the day. We did this because we were adding daytime hours, and we needed to be specific about some of the activities that would be exempted from regulation. And then, outside of those times where they're exempted, they are subject to the same noise restrictions as all other activities. So if they exceed the decibel levels outlined in the ordinance, and a complaint is made, and the police determine that it exceeds those levels outlined, then a violation can be issued, but it is the same as all other noises. All of these proposed edits have been based on precedent drawn from the noise ordinances of other towns in Connecticut, as well as compromise. These revisions bring Fairfield into compliance with state law. There's also a fiscal benefit, that we get the fines that are issued. It improves property values. It will improve public health, and this is a less punitive way to enforce these violations. In summary, residents report that they are subjected to unreasonable noise levels and that current enforcement is not working. Fairfield's ordinance is an outlier in the state and doesn't meet minimum protection requirements under state law. The proposed revisions provide protection from both daytime and nighttime hours, as required by state law, and eliminate key barriers to enforcement. The new ordinance would be consistent with typical restrictions in place in other Connecticut towns. I hope this was helpful in explaining these revisions. Please reach out if you have any other questions. We can all be reached at thertm@fairfieldct.org, or you can reach me personally at jillvergara@gmail.com, which is J-I-L-L-V-E-R-G-A-R-A at gmail.com, or any of the other co-sponsors, such as Drew Giorgiades, Andrew Gosefa, Jay Wolk, and Jeff Goldensy. Thanks so much. Hope this was helpful. Changes need to be made on the floor since the stage we're in.
Okay, so your plan is Monday night, you're gonna do all these changes?
I think that was my... that, yes, I thought that I had to do it that way, but if... it would be better if I could incorporate the changes that were negotiated like that, like the golf courses and the garbage collection. If I could incorporate that in advance of the meeting, that would be preferable, but I thought I had to do it on the floor.
I think you're right. I think you do have to do it on the floor, but I'm just saying, ahead of time, if you can get us to document what you plan on doing, so that we're familiar with it.
Yes, I can do that. We can get the co-sponsors together to do that in advance of the meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Representative [inaudible].
Senator [inaudible], thank you, Representative Vergara and the rest of the committee. You've done an extraordinary job. That was so informative, so helpful. Really, really grateful for the time you put into that. I, Representative Bateson, I think it would be helpful... I know when I see a red line version of a document, it makes me a little, like, I can't figure out what's happening. So I wonder if we could, in addition to the red line version, have a clean, maybe that's what you're suggesting, or Senator Bateson, in addition?
That's easy. Yeah, definitely. Copy that.
Right, thanks. Thank you.
Representative Horton, District 9. Again, I want to thank Representative Vergara and all the co-sponsors of this. I really appreciate this presentation, and especially pointing out, I have to be honest, I wasn't aware, and my own fault probably, about the fiscal benefit. And I think that's so important, that instead of the state receiving the money, it actually comes directly back to Fairfield. I think that's just really important, and I hope everybody pays attention to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Horton. Representative Steele?
Thanks, Jeff Steele, District 2. I thought we actually did go over some of these exemptions already, and we had kind of agreed to them, other than just putting them formally in the agreement, like the golf course, and those were even contentious.
I agree they weren't contentious, but I got into a stage of the ordinance where I couldn't incorporate it until it was officially voted on by the full body.
And then, can you share some of the issues that are still being discussed? You said you met with the police, and it was not resolution, or it was resolution, or what are the sticking points that you'd like to be able to get?
I showed them some of the... some proposed amendments that were contemplating, and it didn't seem like it satisfied some of their concerns, such as including changing shall to may be for some of the issued fines, and including discretionary language in two different parts of the ordinance, one in the enforcement section and another in the procedural measurement section. And there was also another discretionary paragraph that could potentially be added to ensure that police officers, that they can always... it's up to them to decide which to apply. If it's a situation that warrants applying the state criminal statutes for this, it's up to them to decide.
Were these suggestions from you, or to them, or just collective suggestions?
It was something that I put together after reading through the letters and some other just information online about potential ways that these can be written.
I have one more question, but you... but go ahead to others.
Go ahead.
So my only other question is, and this is more general, but I was thinking, if everything does revert back to state statute, I mean, again, just being devil's advocate here, why do we even have to update it? If it all goes to state statute, state statute governs the whole thing?
It's too confusing to have both the local ordinance and then also rely on the state regulatory baseline as, you know, a default. It needs to be incorporated into our local ordinance for the enforcement agent to know what to do. And it's required, you know, it really is specifically required that our local ordinance be at least as stringent as those regulations. So we could repeal it. We could repeal our local ordinance, but I don't think anyone here is talking about that, and I certainly wouldn't be supportive of that.
So really, if we... if we're trying to update it so that it matches state statute, and again, a general question, then the only difference is that we're making ours maybe a bit stricter in certain areas, right?
It is literally such a small, minute difference from the baseline regulations that it's difficult to think that we've been debating this for so long, because I'd say the majority of these changes are necessary, and then outside of the necessary changes, you can find things that we can debate in the specific prohibitions and the exemptions language. But the changes that we could make are so, and that we have made, are so small off of what baseline is, and in comparison to what other towns are already currently doing, we're well below them.
So if they are so small, is there a way that, just, you know, for all of us, maybe it gives us more comfort to vote and support this? Can you specify what those small little changes are that are just slightly stricter, just so we know what they are? I mean, because otherwise, you know, we're matching the state statute, but if you are making some additional changes, they are likely to be stricter then, because they have to be at least as strict. Could we, just so we know what they are? And, you know, back to Mr. Bateson's point, there's a lot of red lines, just so we know, kind of get a fresh copy, and we know, all right, what are the new changes that are slightly stricter?
Hey, Jeff, I just wanted to say something to Giorgiades. I just want to thank the entire body, especially want to thank Jill. We've been in front of the LNA and in front of the RTM since February, going over, making accommodations, listening to people. And I think, one of the... just from listening and attending all the meetings and reading all the documentation, one of the most... thanks, and Jill can tell me if this is... is the plainly audible. That is not in the state statute. That is what the police want. They want more discretion. They don't want to have to arrest people, charge them with felonies or criminal, real criminal issues. Most of these people are not intently breaking the law. And this also gives them more discretion, and as Representative Horton said, it diverts the fines from the state to the town. So that alone is a reason to have noise ordinance here in Fairfield, and not just throw out the noise ordinance. This is better for the police officers, is better for the residents, and is better for the town budget. So that alone, in my opinion, is worth having a statute. And as you and I have gone over in LNA over and over and over again, we know all this information, and this presentation is available to the public now, and it's very well written. So we have worked so hard to make all of these things. We can go on and on, meeting after meeting. Better for six months, I think we've done a good job. So pass this over to Jill.
Thank you, Representative [inaudible].
Thank you, Liz [inaudible], District 4. Jill, really outstanding job, and to all of the sponsors, of course. It's a collective effort. And I want to thank you for being so responsive over and over and over again, to both your colleagues, to your police department, to the public. I mean, this is as much accommodation in the true sense of representation that I've seen on any... I do have a question. What was the... I was off the body, I've gone to the board of finance. What were the amendments in 2017 that joined, like, literally unanimous support, including support from the police department? And what's the difference now?
Those amendments I joined late, the revisions I joined late, it was Representative Farnin who put them forward in 2017, and I joined on the late side as the co-sponsor initially. I hadn't been allowed to join, but I think that it was having difficulty getting through. So it was revisions to the timing, and I don't... I can't remember exactly what it was, but we changed the times for weekend and weekday and weekend hours. And, you know, when the ordinance is put before the full body, you get the entire ordinance like we did just now, and so the language that existed then is very simple, is the same as what we are reviewing right now in terms of, like, the enforcement section and the decibel levels, and the procedure of going to a receptor's property when a complaint is made, and taking the decibel reading. Right? And then, Jill?
Okay, thank you. I don't know what members of the body and president voted for in 2017, but you haven't done anything to those revisions that have created objections, specifically?
In the 2017... no. It was unanimously approved.
Okay, thank you.
Representative [inaudible].
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Kansas [inaudible], District 10. And I just want to say, and I do appreciate the effort that you guys have put in on this, and I've seen this improve as it's gone through the process. And, you know, I'm to the point now where, last month I was inclined to say, you know, we'll vote no, but now I'm leaning toward yes, based on some of the things that I've seen, and hopefully, some of these will be incorporated next week. One of my big concerns coming into this is, I didn't want to see a change in the ordinance where, you know, you hear it like, you know, the no-fundies, or allowing the diverse opportunity to weaponize something like this against other diverse, and I'm feeling more comfortable about that. But I just want to ask, like, a concrete example. I think one of the areas where we have most of the issues is down in the beach area. How would this ordinance impact that area where... How would this ordinance impact that area where, you know, my understanding is you've got a lot of homes in close proximity, within 100 feet of one another, where I would assume this type of year, a lot of people's windows open, so sound travels easily. How would this affect that area specifically?
Yeah, I mean, I, do you want to, I think it's hard to do without a specific sample of noise issue, but it's, it's, we're, 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 so.
Okay, so here, like, so, first it's, I, um.
I have an example.
Oh, go ahead.
So it was Thursday night, I get a text from my neighbor behind, we have the Lurton Road and Burch, the corner. And because we have a good relationship with all our neighbors, she's like, oh, my daughter's having all these people over, going to have music, don't worry, it'll be off at 11:00. Do you have someone's number, someone's number, someone's number? And she texts it to everybody, and she puts all in the group chat, and everyone's like, great, have a good time, let's invite your 15-year-old daughter, so you can people over. And no one's going to call, right? So this is, this is how it's supposed to work. It was amplified music. So is that the kind of example that you wanted?
See, I'm speaking more along the lines of, you know, let's say I'm in my house, I've got the windows open and I'm playing my stereo. It doesn't necessarily have to be very loud for my next door neighbor to hear it, particularly in summertime. Is that something that is now a violation of the plain and the audible standard? That's what I'm just trying to.
Everything starts with a complaint. Keep that in mind. People have to complain, and I don't think your neighbor will complain.
I, in most cases, you're, you're right, but what if you have the cases where, you know, like, you've got, you're not being able to, please, please, liable to complain, you know? That's a fact that I have, that I want.
It's also the police officer who is the intervening agent who has to assess the situation, do the investigative work. If you're, if, if the officer is applying the plainly audible, they determine whether or not it's excessive or not based on their, it's discretionary.
So, so the officer.
It's not, they're not going to be compelled to do anything when they don't think it's an excessive noise.
No, that's, that's, that's what I'm hearing.
Thank you, Representative Horton.
Thanks, Margaret Horton, District 9. I can maybe answer giving a more anecdotal example, if that would be helpful, just of, not my own, but friends who live out in Fairfield Beach Road, who were telling me recently about, there was people having a party, I think it was probably more college students, this is before the school year ended, and they have elementary school-aged children. And there was one evening, and by the way, these are people who are completely fine with, you know, people having fun and parties and everything, but there was one evening where, oh, I gave them a call at least three times during the course of the night, and we're talking at like 1:00 AM, 3:00 AM, instead of not, what we would think of as just normal party hours. And there was really nothing, sort of nothing that was resolved or that could be done, there was no decibel readers, readings or anything. And so this is the kind of thing that they're living with on a regular basis, so that's just one other total example of how I think this could help.
I think that's, I think that's a good example, because we also don't want to impose criminal statutes on the students either. I want to do the more lenient, less thing, lighter thing, is to just impose town ordinance fine rather than having something potentially go on a kid's record. And I think, you know, I just think that that's a better course of doing, doing it. And I do understand why we would impose infractions based on breach of peace or public disturbance in certain issues, but they should be egregious. And there are egregious examples of things happening around town, but thankfully not a tremendous amount. And I'd like to be capturing these more minor issues that we do want to be controlling.
And one great thing about varying the state statutes for the daytime hours that we're required to do, that the police show if it's rock and party and it's only 9:00 PM, they can go, they can sort of slow it down so that it's not 1:00 AM, 3:00 AM. Because we've had some complaints from people around Sacred Heart, again, amplified music during the day, and it just escalates, and then it's hard to put a stop to.
Thank you, Representative Horton, Representative Bates.
And Bates, District 1. Jill, I just want to go back to the way you handled Representative Astorita's question. If, if there's a plainly audible issue, under its current form, are the police compelled to act, or are you planning on a revision that will give them the option to act?
It is an option. They vote, they can decide whether to use the audibility standard or the decibel reader in terms of measurements and which standard they're going to be applying. And in both of those cases, there's some kind of discretion involved, more so with the audibility standard. It's necessarily so when you're funneling this through an enforcement agent to decide whether something is violating, and, you know, hearing ambiguity, it's discretionary.
Okay, I just want to reiterate that my takeaway from the interactions we have with the police department in this room was that they want more discretion on the street to enforce. So that leads me to believe that in its current form, it's strict on, they shall do this, they shall do that.
In the, yeah, in the current form, it's just completely reliant on those decibel readings, and they're.
No, I'm not, I'm, I'm going to get confused with current form, yeah, your current. Proposed. Current proposal.
Oh, you mean what, what amendments we would be making on the floor on Monday? Even in the current form of the ordinance that is before us right now, there's discretion with audibility standard. A lot of the language that I'm, I hope to include is clarifying that discretion and making it, just putting it onto the paper to make sure that everybody is aware of that and knows it.
I've heard your answer, I'm not happy with the answer. I think my takeaway from this is that your current proposal, without your intended revisions next Monday night, is restrictive on the officer that they shall do certain things. So I don't think your question was answered properly in light of what is going to worry this by right now.
Just the, yes, you're right.
They shall.
That's correct.
Issue a warning first that already exists in the ordinance, and then for the second.
You said five minutes ago.
No, then for the second thing, if they determine that it's a violation, the officer determines whether it's a violation, and if they're using the audibility standard, which only can be applied to sound production devices, but if there's amplified music and they're using the audibility standard, they decide whether there's a violation. They decide.
Thank you, Representative Seuss.
Thank you, Liz Seuss.
Representative Horton just told a story that sounds to me like we really need to do something. I mean, if the police, using the discretion they should have, show up at a house at 1:00 and 3:00 o'clock in the morning, how much discretion do you need to know that that's a violation? If you say you can't solve that problem, then we need something to augment whatever they're working off of right now.
I, I do think that this is going to come in stages with this ordinance, and that was intentional. We took this as an incremental step to try to clean up what we saw as the biggest problems. And I do think that, and this is a proposal that I made to the chief, is I do think annually they should report, like they do for some of these other ordinances in the same month, and tell us how it's going, how enforcement is going, and then the RTM can tweak it accordingly.
So in 2017, were any changes made would have, would have changed the question that Representative Aristida, Astorita, sorry, but I like your new last name. So, you know.
I've heard a lot worse, trust me.
So would it have, you know, would have his answer been different? I mean, I'm just trying to understand what happened in, in the past number of years that a unanimous approval of amendments to an ordinance has now turned into, you know, a battle over something that seems like it's never been heard before?
I don't really know. I, it, I think a lot of the consternation comes from that shall compulsory language that has always existed, and I'm glad we know about it now and we can try to directly address it. But I, I don't really know what happens in the intervening years. And maybe it's, I really, I can't put words in anybody's mouth, but I did understand from the conversation that I had with the chief, which was really amicable, and I, and I'm very glad that I had it, was, you know, they're genuinely concerned with having this aligned with 21st century policing techniques and the standards that they're held to. And they want to be able to, they, they want to be able to confer with people, work with people, and not just slap fines or slap infractions on people, and I, I can understand that, and I, I get it.
I, I completely agree, I'm very happy that you had a productive meeting with them. I just want for the record to say neither Representative Farnin, who I believe was the sponsor, or the police, were concerned about the shall language at the time, which was, of course, their right to be concerned about.
So I've been looking into this word shall a lot, and it actually came before the Supreme Court of the United States in Town of Castle Rock, Colorado versus Gonzalez. And their ordinance said shall, that you shall. The woman had a restraining order against her husband, and it said shall, and the Supreme Court found against her that that word shall did not require the police to enforce the restraining order. So I think if you look at that case, that all your worries about this word shall will go away.
So it's important to clarify the difference between, like, state statutory criminal language, like a penal code, versus town ordinances. So in that situation, that was like a penal code, a criminal statute, and even in that case, the court was holding that shall doesn't bind a police officer, and that police officers should inherently have discretion. But for, and, and the same goes for a local ordinance, but it's, it's, it's important to understand that if you go through our town code, every single ordinance says shall, because town ordinances are just different, there's different implications for them, they're not criminal, they're lighter, and if you look at any other towns' ordinances for anything, it almost always says shall. It's a very normal thing to do, which doesn't mean we have to continue to do it if the police, as the enforcement agents, have an issue with it. But it is important to understand that it is like, I reviewed the town, the local code, our town code, and like I could not find an instance where it's not used, so it's very common in ordinances.
Representative Steele?
Thank you, Jeff Steele, District 2. Just maybe I can clarify a little bit for Representative Bates, and maybe it was clarified, but there was, there's current ordinance and then current proposal, and then potentially a newly proposed proposal or new changes to it. The, the current ordinance has shall and does require them to act. The current proposal keeps the same language, but now we're discussing what Chief Calamora said would be a nice change, and I think right now, as we go to update this, it's a good time to look through the whole thing. And if one of these words or one of these phrases or parts of it concern them now, and we're going through the update process, why can't we do that? And whether the word shall is used in ordinance everywhere or not is almost, you know, beside the fact. He brought up two issues where shall is used at the state level, what do you say, when there's a crime of violence at the state level? He listed two instances which are shall, and everywhere, everywhere else is a may. And I think to, to create this discretion they're asking for, changing shall to may, if they feel more comfortable, and we all can, and there's not this difference between the two, then I think we do it. I, I know there's also a clause in the state statute, and I think this is really what they were just trying to achieve, and that was, they also require investigators to make a renewable, I'm sorry, a reasonable effort in light of the circumstances to correct a violation or achieve compliance by means of conference, conciliation, and persuasion. And to go that route before, like you, like you said, slapping fines and giving tickets and arresting people. So I think that's the gist of it, and.
We do satisfy that already with our warnings, so that's not a universal thing applied for the noise ordinances in all towns, having the first step be a warning. So that is the kind of effort to be conciliation and working with people. So it's supposed to be, even if they're finding a violation, the first time they go to someone's house, they should be just giving them a warning, and hopefully that fixes everything. And it's only if they go back to that same place.
Right, right, right. So again, but not to be handcuffed to definitely give a fine or infraction in the second offense. I mean, that's the whole point of discretion. Maybe there's a reason there, I mean, every, every call that they make is, is, you know, they have to depend on, on having a right for discretion to make decisions. That's their job, that's what they're trained to do. So I'm glad we're discussing it, and I hope that is something you put in it, because I think that would make a lot of people feel more comfortable with it.
I'd like to say it's also the discretion of the person. If they get the warning, they can continue to, you know, violate the noise ordinance and risk getting a, a fine, or they can stop. So it's discretion on both sides. So that's something to think of as well.
Representative Bates?
Mr. Steele said it, I'm good.
Representative Astorita?
Yeah, Ken Astorita, District 10. Thanks, Representative Steele, that, that helped clarify actually some things for me. But I'm not concerned about like the 1:00 or 2:00 o'clock in the morning example. I agree, like, that's pretty self-evident. What, what I'm concerned about is like the 2:00, 3:00 in the afternoon stuff, you know, middle of the day stuff. And that, and that's where it's important for me, for the, for the police to be comfortable that they have the discretion, how they feel the best way to act. And, and I know we talked about it at the beginning, I think it would be very helpful for me if we got a, a clean draft of the ordinance that's being proposed, and then, if possible, if you, I apologize for that, if, if perhaps, like, you could put up, just like a, a cover of, of the amendments that you're going to be proposing, you're expecting to be proposed at next Monday's meeting, that would be very helpful for me.
Thank you. Representative Wolk?
Jay Wolk, District 5. So I can't thank you enough for everything you've done, Jill. I mean, really, to take this on, do we really need all the, you know, I'm like, I'm exhausted from this for months. So I remember being, you know, voting once on this body, I don't know whether you were on, Representative Bates, or who else was on, Hank, maybe you were on. I remember we discussing burglar alarms going off constantly, and that's a noise ordinance. How do you like to, you know, if your, your neighbor's burglar alarm and the sirens going off, you know, at 3:00 in the morning? But I remember that we decided, I guess we voted on, that, you know, the first time they go to their home, it's a warning, just like now. And the second time, I think they get a slight fine, and then the third time, then they get slammed with a, with a higher fine. And that's something that I think, you know, I think everybody who's been on this RTM for a long time know that I've been an advocate for the police department, and I've even been on the police department as a special. I have a special thing in my heart for their police department here in town. They've helped my family out, they've been there. So I'm, would be the last one to be part of this noise ordinance to hurt the police department, to hurt the officers. You know, I, I think this, you know, going back to Representative Bates, and I think, of course, it's going to be a discretion to the police officer who shows up in their best, best discretion on what they, what they're going to do next. And, and to you, Jill, that is, I don't want to see college students getting this on their records either. This should be, you know, a, a, a fine for them, but not go on their permanent record for, you know, they have records playing too loud, you know? have records playing too loud, you know? And Ken, I can, I can side with you. I mean, the reason why I got involved in all this is because of noise in my condominium when I was the president, like I said before, of gardening, of the gardeners showing up at 7:00 o'clock in the morning with their leaf blowers. You know, that's, that's a problem. But I worked that out with them. So I want to thank you for everything that you've done.
Thank you. Anybody else? Or have we beat this enough tonight and the last six months?
Representative McCormick is on remotely.
Okay.
If I may ask a question?
Go right ahead.
To Representative Vergara, how does the proposed daytime hours impact, for example, Sacred Heart University and their conducting football game activities during the day, let's say on a Saturday or a Sunday?
If someone is going to complain about it, and if it would violate the decibel levels at the point where the police officer would do the reading, which is at the receptor's property, not the emitter's, it's the receptor's, then they should implement soundproofing measures if this is an activity that they want to engage in a lot. If it's a one-off, they can apply for a variance. But that's the way it's got to be. And there are ways that businesses and schools can be implementing soundproofing, and they're not. And they're not protecting their neighbors from this, and they really should be. If this is emanating to a point where it's going to register on a decibel reader, or a police officer is determining that they can hear in a plainly audible way, because it's music from so far away, then it's, it's really quite loud.
So the marching bands, for example, that perform at football games, both, well, I guess Fairfield U doesn't have a football team anymore, but Sacred Heart, I think, does, and various outdoor sporting activities that have a band component, that would potentially violate this noise ordinance as per-
If it's amplified. Yeah. As far as I'm aware, most marching bands don't amplify it. But yeah, if it's attached to some kind of amp or speaker and they're-
Okay, if it's not, if it's not attached to an amp or speaker?
If it's not, then it can't be subject to the plainly audible standard.
Okay. And secondly, I just want to make a comment. I looked at that Castle Rock versus Gonzalez case. It does not stand for the proposition that shall language is not compulsory to law enforcement. I think if you look at the holding of the case, just from a legal perspective, it has to do with somebody suing a town under a due process claim, indicating that they had some kind of a claim against the police department for failure to enforce a statute. But it certainly does not stand for the proposition that shall language is not compulsory on the police department. So I don't want anyone, either from the public or from our body, to walk away according to Representative Giorgiades' lay interpretation of that case, that it somehow excuses the police from not enforcing an ordinance that says shall. That case law does not stand for that proposition. So I just want to make that, make that point and clear that up. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that's online? Nobody else in the room? Okay, so we will adjourn to our committees. Make sure you call in if you're online, and make sure you record your meetings. Huh? You guys? Yeah, you?